Hafadeh, thank you all for being here. The Committee on Education, Air Transportation, and Statistics Research and Planning will now convene this public hearing. Today is Wednesday, September 25th, and it is currently 9:04 a.m. For the record and in accordance with the open government law... Excuse me. Public notices were sent out via email to all senators, stakeholders in all main media broadcasting outlets on September 17th, and the second notice on September 19th. Notice of today's public hearing was also available on the Guam Legislature's website. With me today is Senator Kelly Marsh. Thank you for being here. On the agenda today, we have the following item: Bill Number 167-35, sponsored by Kelly Marsh Titanot, Tina Rose Munya Barnes, and Sabina Flores Perez; an Act to amend subsection 1203, 1206, 1209H, 1210, 1211, and 1214, each of Chapter 1, Title V Guam Code Annotated, relative to renewing the Guam Comprehensive Development Plan to encompass the principles of sustainability. We have today to recognize, to give testimony is Mrs. Lola Leong-Guerrero. If you'd like to come to the bench, please. And also, Mrs. Esther Tiedeby. Will you be giving testimony as well? Okay. Senator Marsh, I'd like to yield the floor to you, and perhaps you can do some opening remarks and discuss the bill further. Thank you.
Sign of the assi, Madam Chair, and especially thank you for being so timely in having this public hearing on this, which I assess to be a very important bill. So, thank you very much for that. Today, we are hearing Bill 167-35. And due to negative impacts and changes to our environment, like the rest of the world, we need a more sustainable and integrated plan that encompasses the principles of sustainability and responsible uses of our finite and often very vulnerable resources. It is crucial that we do a better job of meeting our present needs without compromising the ability of future generations, which is our children and our grandchildren, and those beyond, without compromising their ability to meet their needs. Guam's Comprehensive Development Plan Law is in need of being modernized to reflect this truth. Sustainability and climate change are some of the defining issues of our time, and thus, we are at a defining moment in history. We need to be asking ourselves, what legacy are we going to leave for those after us? What legacy are we leaving about how we cared about their heritage and their resources? We also need to act now to protect our economy, our island way of life, and the tomorrow culture. Perhaps, a lot of times, people think it has to be either environment or the economy. But really, perhaps more than many other places, our environment is our economy. And our environment is definitely a strong part of the tomorrow culture. And our environment adds so much and is such a large part of our health and well-being of us and the larger community. So although Guam is rich in many ways as a society, we perhaps can all come up with a litany, a list of the challenges that we face. Our public infrastructure is in constant need of structural repair. Our economy has too few industries. Typhoons and tropical storms are increasing. Our coastlines are eroding. And our agricultural and fishing production is being affected, and the list could go on. Collectively, it negatively impacts so many important things, like our food security and our ability to remain a quality tourist destination. So our government must be proactive rather than reactive. It needs to understand our limits to certain types of growth and work for an optimal future for Guam. To meet our immense economic, cultural, and environmental challenges, we must develop and implement a sustainable development plan. And this, of course, is going to require so much coordinated efforts between our governmental agencies, our non-governmental organizations, research organizations, and the community at large. That will give us the ability to develop in a long-term, responsible, and integrated way. So with that, thank you for letting me make that opening set of remarks, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Marsh. I'd like to recognize our colleague, Senator Chirlahy. Thank you for being present. Mrs. Leong-Guerrero will open the floor to you to give testimony on the bill, and then I'll allow the panel to ask questions. Thank you.
Buenas en hafadeh, Madam Chair and members of the committee. My name is Lola Leong-Guerrero. I'm the chief planner for the Bureau Statistics and Plans, and I come before you, your committee, to testify on behalf of the Bureau in support of Bill Number 167-35. So, dear Vice Speaker Nelson, this is in reference to Bill Number 167-35, an Act to amend subsection 1203, 1206, 1209H, 1210, 1211, and 1214, each of Chapter 1, Title V of the Guam Code Annotated, relative to renewing the Guam Comprehensive Development Plan to encompass the principles of sustainability. The Bureau Statistics and Plans fully supports this measure and recommends its passage by the legislature. When utilized, the existing Comprehensive Development Plan statute has well served as the basis for land use planning and as a foundation for the broader development planning, which our community will need in the future. However, the current statute was enacted a generation ago and does not fully reflect many of the public concerns that have arisen into intervening decades. In particular, there is the increasing impact of climate change on sea level rise, natural resources, storm activity, and public health. In this same vein, the planning concept of sustainable development has emerged as an important organizing principle for responsible planning for any community. Sustainable development addresses the needs of a growing community while simultaneously safeguarding the ability of natural resources and ecosystems to sustain the economy and quality of life upon which any society depends. Inasmuch as ours is an island community, unlimited land space, it is clearly evident that this principle must be central to any future comprehensive planning effort. Due consideration must also be given, not only to economic and land use issues, but also other development and social goals, including but are, but not limited to, transportation, public safety, healthcare, and cultural preservation. The planning staff of the Bureau is in the process of conducting an assessment of the measures and resources required to make current, the existing land use plans for the community and to incorporate the broader development concerns as set forth in the Comprehensive Development Plan statute. In this regard, Bill Number 167-35 is an extremely time measure, especially given recent executive orders by Governor Lou Leong-Guerrero, to move forward on policies to improve climate change resiliency and to protect our coral reefs from the adverse impacts of climate change. The goal of responsible socio-economic planning for our community would be advanced by action by this legislature to update the objectives of the current statute and incorporate the present values and concerns of the people of Guam. For the aforementioned reasons, the Bureau welcomes the introduction of Bill Number 167-35 and urges its approval by your committee and legislature as a whole. Madam Chair and members of the committee, thank you and Sisus Masi for the opportunity to provide this testimony on Bill Number 167-35. Respectfully.
Thank you, Mrs. Leong-Guerrero. Do you have any questions? You can yield it to Senator Chirlahy. Senator Chirlahy, do you have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you. I guess I... We've had on the books for many years the goal for planning. And I just wanted to know, first of all, the bill, you know, makes some changes to the current law. And one of the changes that I really appreciate is this one that would add that the plan shall be guided by the United Nations Global Program of Action for the Sustainable Development of Small Island Developing States and the U.N.'s Sustainable Development Goals. That seems very practical. And, but, I guess I just wanted to know, without this change in law, are you limited in what you can do in these regards? Because it... You still have the same mandates, right?
Yes, yes.
To incorporate all the different areas of, you know, transportation, land use, housing, all of that. So I guess I just, I just wanted to know, what is, especially coral reefs? I know Bureau Statistics and Plan, that is your mandate. So I guess I just wanted to know, what is it that you're finding to be constricting right now?
Well, I don't think it's constricting, that's the word, but more, it's like we're just making, enhancing it, adding additional language to the law that would actually strengthen it and make it more green with the word "sustainability." So, we have several. We have like the Guam Reef Resiliency Strategy. So a lot of, and we do a lot of networking and collaboration. But I'm just gonna say over time, I've been with the Bureau for a long time. But we've seen that agent... It's like, almost like the, we went from Bureau Planning to Bureau Statistics and Plans, and it's almost like the planning part of it kind of fell away. But because other entities and organizations were actually doing their master plans.
Right.
So I think now this, and we have like the, something to guide that would actually enhance and strengthen the ability for the Bureau to actually work with the entire government of Guam, white autonomous agencies, as well as the line agencies to make this happen.
All right. Do you think this removes any of the authority of those agencies? For example, land... The land agencies are supposed to be doing their own land planning, right? But do you think this, the timing of this law or that this law would then change any of that? Who has the authority to do what in that regards?
I don't think so, because the Bureau is still responsible for the AAA process. So any plan, development must go to the governor for submission. And we actually use the Bureau Statistics and Plans Guam Coastal Management Program that actually collaborates with the entity in going through the review process.
All right. And what about, it says, it's not really funded, right?
Yes.
And so, it says you're going to submit a budget and within 60 calendar days. But as you know, we just finished the budget.
Yes.
And I'm curious, so how were you funding this before? Or is this going to be another one of those plans? Like we've seen over the years, several of them, with every different governor. We see every vision of this huge master plan that... And I want to know if you have an accounting of what was spent on all of those? For example, I think one was called Vision... I don't really remember the names, but that type of thing, I always question, you know, what we're spending on it versus, you know, something more concrete. For example, a climate, you know, how are we going to rebuild? I think Hawaii has a plan. I can't remember the title of it. But it's very specifically focused on shoring up for climate change. Very specifically. And to me, that's where I would be wanting to put my money as opposed to a huge, you know...
Yes.
I mean, not, yeah, because I just think like the agencies, they are planning. But yeah, please, please.
So there are challenges with local resources. So we're hopeful that maybe for the next budget, we should, you know, we can submit something for additional manpower to help support this. But also, our office has been very instrumental in exploring federal resources. And, you know, this maybe might be, you know, the opportunity to also explore federal resources. Because with, for example, the North and Central Land Use Plan, that was actually federally funded. So, if anything, we would... I'm just gonna say we would actually explore other federal, other resources to kind of make this happen if we don't get a budget for it. But we're hopeful for the next budget go-around that we can have something in place to be able to implement this.
Okay, so you don't think that the current resources of the government can do this?
I actually think we can, because we're doing like small pieces of planning.
Right, that's what I mean.
Yeah, we're doing, we're doing small pieces of planning, but it's just like little steps to be able to have, to move forward. So this basically enhancing and strengthening the statute will actually just incorporate and also open opportunities for other, I guess, resources to apply for. If you have certain words like sustainability, climate change, incorporate it into the statute. This will actually benefit our organization to open federal funding opportunities for Guam.
Yeah, I have no objection to opening up the opportunities for your agency. Your agency is really much on the record as one of very productive agency, especially with federal grants and managing those and actually having concrete products. But, for example, under transportation, so part of the plan is a transportation element. So that exists already by law. And it adds in this sentence, "This element shall include necessary investments in improving and expanding public transportation, which directly affect overall employment and economic efficiency and productivity." And I would hope that the department, I mean our... (cough) Transportation Agency also has this as their mandate. And that's all. I just don't want, you know, if they are focusing on that, that we're going to take away their ability to... They're supposed to be pursuing those funds as well, right? Things like that. But, but I know that you do have a very good track record, so I'm not questioning your ability to do that. Just, yeah, how would that be coordinated? And I really am, so the other thing is, sorry, I'm sure. The, this is another one of those plans that will be submitted to the legislature and then default approval within 90 days. Do you agree with that? Default approval in 90 days? This is a huge master plan.
Yes.
When is the last time? What would you report on the status of our planning so far? I mean, we've been doing this. This has been the mandate for many, many years.
Well, I do know the last plan was actually the North and Central Land Use Plan. And it did, I guess...
So what was the plan that was funded by GIDEA, maybe? Or remember, what was the last plan in the last administration? Where we, they had all those, what's it called? Yeah, the big conferences at the Duceit-Tani and different things.
Oh, the Guam 2065.
Yeah.
So we had the Guam 2065, but there really wasn't, it was done through an executive order and not anything through a legislature. I mean, you know, a bill form or a public law. So for me, just as a non-BSP employee, I would just say, if we want to do something, we need to make sure that we kind of do something that has also the, we go through the legislative process. And with Bureau Planning, we are responsible for the AAA process. For any master plans that are actually drafted and submitted to the governor must go through the AAA process. So, I actually, I'm not... Our office was somehow involved, but I don't think I can speak on behalf of... But as a person, I would feel that anything pertaining to development or something, we should have, we should go through the legislative process.
Well, it seems to me if we're going to, you know, have a plan that mandates what the different agencies are going to do and that departs from what we think they are mandated to do right now, then of course, yeah, we should be coordinated, right? And especially if we're going to spend any money on it, I feel like, yes, you want it to be something that can be implemented and enforced or regulated properly. So do you know, well, without a budget, let's say? I, it's, I'm thinking, of course, all these agencies are already mandated to do these things and to prepare plans, like the, you know, each portion of the plan that you are going to add to your master plan. I mean, is, is it something that you really believe will entail a lot of money?
You know, I can't speak for that.
All right. Will it preclude the other agencies from getting grants for, if they wanted to get grants for planning?
You know, I don't think so. I think really, our, our agency, we do a lot of coordination and networking. So it's not just BSP that's going to do all of this. There's going to be a lot of collaboration leverage working with all of, you know, the agencies. It's not, it's not just a BSP. This is a government, you know, for the whole purpose of, I guess, having something for our children and grandchildren. And it's not going to preclude other agencies from applying for resources, but it's going to allow us to also collaborate and coordinate with them to ensure that whatever parts of the plan they're working on, it's consistent with the updated statutes.
Are you current, do you currently have any plans in regards to climate change?
We do have a climate change resiliency. We did, in the previous administration, we did apply, or we did get funding for a climate change resilience and grant under Department of Interior. So we are working, we had submitted these monies. We are working with the University of Guam to, I guess, implement or conduct a vulnerability assessment. And so we should be getting, we did have, and also, so we should be getting a report from the University of Guam shortly. It basically has to do with should sea level rise, it actually shows areas where our coastline and what infrastructures would be impacted. And then based on that report, let's say GPA, GWA, DPW, when they do their contracts for infrastructure, they should, you know, you know, take into consideration the vulnerability assessments, so.
Great, yes, I saw that at a conference recently.
Yes, yes.
I think it was your conference, and it was an excellent. So I know that you guys have been working on this already.
Yes.
And what I'd like to see is that translate, yes, into, you've got it mapped out. I think you, your agency has many maps that are very useful to the rest of the government.
Yes.
And you've got it all mapped out, where the, where the sea rise might occur, where flooding actually is occurring now, things like that. And I just, I just want to say, yeah, if we're going to put any resources, let's put it to, you know, implementing what, what your recommendations are now. And are there recommendations that will be coming?
So right now, the, this report, once it's finalized and, because it submitted, it would actually provide recommendations of where not to build or...
All right. Okay. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Chirlahy. We do have another individual that would like to testify. Deepak Dewan, is that how you say it? So please go ahead and state your name for the rec...
Good morning, Senators. Madam Chair, thank you very much for the opportunity to come before you today. I am Deepak Dewan. I'm here to represent GIDEA. Our director could not be here due to a scheduling conflict. However, given the enormous significance of this bill, we wanted to make sure GIDEA was represented. We feel that this bill provides a way forward into the 21st century. It highlights not only the need, but the imperative for a long-term database socio-economic planning. The sustainable use of our environment is essential, sustainable for economic growth. GIDEA wholeheartedly supports the development and implementation of a new sustainable development for Guam. All of these things taken together will help to transform our community for the better. I want to thank our primary author for the bill of her vision. Our collective future as together depends on creating sustainable future not only for future generations, but for all of us here today. This bill is a way forward towards the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Deepak. Senator Chirlahy?
Thank you. I appreciate that GIDEA's represented here now. I wanted to follow it with an earlier train of thought in this. So we had recent master planning being done, and I think GIDEA was one of the lead agencies on that, if I recall correctly. And I just wanted to know if, if you can account for how much was spent on that type of planning and why that planning is not adequate to bring us forward in this regard? Did that planning not include sustainable or climate change?
You know, I would have to, I would have to revert back to our administrator at GIDEA, and I can have her answer any additional questions that you may have on that. Yeah.
All right. I guess if, between the two of you, could you just bring us up to speed on the plans that have been done? What components we may already have and that we're not looking at reinventing that wheel? What components you've, we've spent money on in the past that are just not useful anymore? Because they, I don't know, if they didn't include, you know, climate change in there or sustainability or things like that? Just so that we can more easily accept that we're going to again, you know, invest in master plans as opposed to the micro plans?
So in regards to the Bureau of Forest Plans that have gone to the AAA process, we know there's the North and Central Land Use Plan that was federally funded. We know there is also the Port Authority Master Plan that was federally funded. Those, as far as what has gone to the AAA process, those are the two plans that have been implemented, you know, they've gone to the public review process, went and was submitted us a master plan for Guam.
All right, thank you, yes. Those I'm well aware of, yeah.
Yes.
But I know that there've been other efforts, so that's why I'm just checking. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Chirlahy. I do have several questions as well about this movement, because I'm thinking that when GIDEA shows up, there's, there's a movement for sums of money being moved into certain areas to focus on a certain mission and vision. And last term, we didn't have a lot of transparency with GIDEA. And so this is a different administration. And so my concern is, is are we going to move forward with these kind of proposals every time an administration changes? And so are we looking to build up or develop what is currently proposed in the past? Are we looking to completely wipe the board clean and start something new and thereby costing more money and completely going a different direction with this plan? Maybe one of you can answer it if...
The way, I'm not going to speak on behalf of the Bureau. I just as a regular citizen of Guam. To me, what we're doing is we're actually strengthening the statute to incorporate language. So this has always been there.
Right.
So it's never, we never had it where we're adding something new. But what I've seen over the years, especially with the Bureau, when we were Bureau of Planning, and then we went from Bureau Statistics and Plans, a lot of those planning aspects of it kind of, everyone is doing their own plans. But for me, if you're going to develop a master plan for Guam, it must go through the AAA process. So I know you were talking about the Guam, I think it's the Guam 2065, but there, I guess there is ideas about developing aspect, but it was, I don't call it a plan, just because it... because it didn't go through the AAA process. So, I refer to a plan as something like the North and Central Land Use Plan, that kind of provides elements of what developers will, you know, to implement within certain areas in North and Central Guam. So, I mean, they're, that's my perspective. As far as, so we do need, I mean, you know, our island is so small, but we are populated. There's, we see different type of development happening, and we don't have a Southern Development Guam Plan. And, you know, we need to actually, we're trying to find resources and to work with the mayors to actually have something realized. So, for me, for any type of plans that we're talking about in regards to what we're doing, it's something that would go through the AAA process. And I'm just...
Okay. Okay. You're absolutely right, Mrs. Leon Guerrero, that this has been in statute, we're just making some technical, we're addressing some technicalities of the statute. And so, it's sent by this bill, it's becoming a little bit more clear of this function. Was it asked from GIDEA that you were the cost of the previous vision that was trying to be implemented, the Guam 2065? Do you know the cost of that?
I'm sorry, I don't at this moment, but I can have our administrator send that down to you.
Okay. So, if we, the biggest conflict is moving towards something that has already been in the works, and then continuing to find a way to fund it. We're having our public safety agencies short, we're having our education agencies short, our health agencies are struggling, and so, my concern was the slip in of a submission of a budget for this plan. And as the previous speaker was mentioning, that perhaps that some of these agencies have been working on similar plans, they just have to bring it in together and move forward together. And if we've been doing that process and that work, we're not reinventing the will. And so, I'd like to thank you for your testimony and for taking the time out to come today. And I'd like to offer the floor to Senator Marsh Tiedenwee for her closing.
Senator Maasi to both of you for coming here and testifying, and then also continuing to be here to answer some of our questions. So, for Ms. Leon Guerrero, just to go back to that idea, it's been touched upon a couple of times, but just to maybe underscore it, or just create that firmer impression of it. So, we've talked about that other agencies, or not other, but all agencies, they are, of course, developing some sort of plan on their own. And so, there was mention of the hope that there are certain things that they're going to be doing. And so, would you say, in the way that you've discussed it, it sounds like you're saying that by strengthening or adding language, that this formalizes those concepts and helps ensure that they will be there beyond just hoping that they're there?
Yeah, so I do know, like, for example, the Bureau Statistics and Plans, we have the Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant Program, and we develop a criminal justice records improvement strategy. So, this strategy plan actually drives funding for law enforcement. The same thing with the Criminal Justice Records Improvement Plan, which was implemented in 1992, which we didn't go through the AAA process, but what this plan did was it provided, so all of this is just providing federal resources to implement. So, as a result of the Criminal Justice Records Improvement Plan, we were able to automate the law enforcement agencies, DOC, GPD, the AG, and the judiciary Guam. So, and maybe also, like with transportation, we have Office of Highway Safety Plan, but maybe a lot of that is driven on the resources that come to Guam that they have to have in place to identify just what they're going to do, or programs or projects that the funding would be utilized for the next, let's say, five years. So, for me, when I'm, as a non-BSP employee, so there are a lot of, maybe there's plans that are being implemented, but maybe too, those plans are, it's a requirement in order to get these federal resources, and it's not necessary that the plan has to go through the AAA process. So, but when they take into consideration, there should, so our office is also part of the Guam State Clearinghouse Review. So, when any, for any federal funding, it comes over, we review the programmatic, and then we just make sure that we're collaborating. And then, the same thing with the Guam Coastal Management Program within the Bureau Statistics and Plans, any federal resources that will impact, you know, land, they would have to go to the Federal Consistency Review, along, also, we, with, BSP is also part of the ARC, they also, things have to also go through that review process. So, I'm hoping that actually, because maybe I misspoke when I, so when I'm talking about the, a master plan, it's really like the North and Central, we need a Southern Development Master Plan. I know there is a transportation plan, but I think a lot, you know, and a public, but that's actually made, driven as a result of getting federal funds for Guam.
Senator Maasi for that and response, where it helps us understand that a lot of these plans, as you're mentioning, and it's similar to something I was talking about yesterday at another public hearing, is that it's perhaps driven more by other requirements, and so, there may be a certain amount of sustainability or other aspects that the agency is thinking of. But what may be more immediate in these individual plans is them meeting certain requirements and being driven that way. So, I think with a plan like this, we're working to better ensure that we're all on the same page, we're all saying the same thing, we all have those higher principles that may be outside of a federal grant or some other sort of grant, that may be looking at something more specifically. So, you mentioned the North and South Plans. Do you know the date of the last comprehensive development plan?
Okay, hi. So, are you referring to the North and Central Guam Land Use Plan? That plan was finalized...
Can you please just state your name for the record? I'm sorry. Thank you. I didn't mean to interrupt.
Hi, yes. I'm Esther Tiedenwee. I'm a planner with the Bureau Statistics and Plans. So, Senator, to answer your question, the North and Central Guam Land Use Plan was finalized in September 2009.
Okay, so it's 10 years old, and I'm sure it started years before, so, yeah. So, thank you for that. And in the process of developing a comprehensive development plan, would part of the process be reaching out to the agencies and hearing from them? So, I guess what I'm getting at is, just for maybe the general listening audience to understand that it wouldn't necessarily be the Bureau of Statistics and Plans thinking about these other agencies and then overlaying something onto them that's a mandate, but it would be very much by gathering information from them and then working with them to ensure that their needs are being met, but also being integrated with others? Is that some of how the process would go?
So, if I can recall, when, in the development of the North and Central Guam Land Use Plan, we worked with the community, and we looked at different aspects to preserve the northern areas, specifically the aquifer. And I believe this was developed at a time when we were expecting the military relocation to Guam, and the intent from the Guam Coastal Management side was to protect Guam's resources. So, we did work with other agencies, yes, we did, and with the community.
Those elements are good to hear of, and I especially also like the fact that you're interacting with the community to have them be aware and perhaps be getting their input. I've heard of some situations where there are agencies or entities within the government that perhaps inadvertently are developing individual plans apart from each other that actually appear to, on some level, be conflicting with other agencies. One of them that comes to mind, and we'll have to see what direction it goes in, but for the Hagatna Restoration and Redevelopment Authority Plan, some of what has been talked about is the Marina and the Guam Waste, okay, it is wastewater treatment facility, and it seems like what Guam Wastewater Facility Authority was planning was not necessarily matching up with what some other plans were. So, it seems to me that this, having a comprehensive development plan, it creates opportunities for agencies to be talking with one another, to be informed by some of the entities that you were mentioning that are dealing with climate change and so forth, and for them to be, again, making sure they're on the same page and we're not developing in some ways that have to then be taken back and developed in other ways. Do you see that as something that would happen with this kind of development plan, that it would allow for better coordination, maybe increased communication among those agencies?
I'm going to say yes. And so, yes, yes.
That's very good to hear, because with some of those, with some of those, and maybe they're inadvertent, and they're all very well-intentioned, I'm sure, but it can mean, if they're in conflict with each other and movements continue along for many years, it can mean the loss, the potential loss of tens or hundreds of millions of dollars if the plans are conflicting with each other. With funding, that's something we've talked about quite a bit. Is this type of a plan, to the best of your understanding, is that something that could qualify for a Department of Interior Technical Assistance Grant, to the best of your understanding?
We, there's possibilities, there's also the Economic Development, EDA, grant opportunity. This, I mean, there's actually a lot of resources out there, it's just a matter of exploring. So, I think DOI, even our Coastal Zone Management Program, the U.S. Department of Commerce, the EDA, so those are like the three federal agencies that we might be able to tap to, for, to develop a comprehensive master plan for Guam, an updated comprehensive master plan.
Yes, an updated, quite a lot has happened to our environment, to our understanding of climate change and sea level rise since 2009, I would definitely say. And it's very good to hear about federal funding sources. I am definitely supportive of any opportunity to leverage federal funding and the type of support that they offer. So, I also want to mention, I meant to mention this in my opening comments, but was trying not to be overlong in my opening comments, but some of the elements that are added in here, and I think this also speaks to developments that have been going on in our social sciences and the way that we approach things, as well as with, in the Indigenous rights movements that have been happening and the world recognition of them. So, we work to incorporate those, and I really want to thank the former senator who mentioned them, was appreciative of seeing that it's, this plan is to be guided by the UN Sustainable Development Goals. And there's also specifically these small area development goals that it is to look to, that have perhaps different needs than other places. But I just want to be able to point out, so one of the elements it adds in is firming up the concept of preservation, a preservation element that has both long and short-range programs to ensure the maintenance, preservation, safeguarding, promotion, and continued identification of cultural and historical sites, to include natural resources and resource areas. Some of the movement within historic preservation and those sorts of fields has been to look at things more comprehensively and not just as objects and buildings and structures and districts. One is the Indigenous Connection and Rights. This element shall reflect Indigenous Chamorro concepts of cultural and ancestral connections to heritage, land, sea, and air, and environment, and all that is native and endemic within it. The continuation of the Chamorro culture and cultural identity are predicated on the recognition and protection of Indigenous connections and rights to their homeland throughout the government of Guam. And I think this will be a very important element. It's one that maybe not every agency formally has or recognizes within it, but I think across all boards, we need to be recognizing that. And so, even when it does come to an agency like transportation, I'm sure that there are ways that they can be incorporating such concepts and making sure that the land that they're using, or even the roads that they're recognizing, that they are, in one way or another, connected to those rights and to ancestral connections to the land. They say that a lot of our roads, for example, are perhaps based on ancestral trails, so. And then, adding in elements on community mental health, physical health, and well-being, an element that takes into consideration the many types of impacts that different developments and government actions can have on the mental and physical health and well-being of our community, especially but not limited to that of the Indigenous Chamorro people. I think that part of what we're seeing with our high suicide rates, some of our other issues that we're suffering at as a community, in really inordinately high rates, especially compared to the rest of the nation, it can be boiled down to the fact that across all agencies, this maybe isn't fully implemented, and this creates an opportunity for every agency to be thinking about those kind of social impacts that really have those detrimental effects upon our entire community. So, I just wanted to highlight those, sorry to throw in some of my opening statement there. And thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to do that. Those were my main questions. And again, Madam Chair, thank you for letting me ask those questions.
Thank you, Senator Marsh. Just, I'd like to recognize Senator Perez, thank you for being present. We, excuse me, we mentioned that federal grants would be an avenue that we could explore to move this plan forward, and they, there was a mention of the North and Central Plan in 2009. What were some of the federal grants that we could see came from the North and Central Plan, something tangible and concrete that we're able to see today? Something tangible and concrete that we're able to see today?
So the North and Central Land Use was actually funded with the Coastal Zone Management Program. Yes. So were you, were you talking about as a result of the North and Central Land Use Plan, what particular?
Yes. How was the North and Central Plan, one funded? And then we mentioned that there's a possibility to avail to other grants because of this plan?
Yeah. So the North and Central Land Use, so I mentioned two plans that I'm aware of that were federally funded. The North and Central Land Use Plan and the Port Authority Master Plan.
So the plan was federally funded.
Yes.
What is something that we can see that was tangible that came from the plan? And was anything federally funded from that plan? Or were we able to avail to any federal grants?
No, 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 no. So as a result of the North and Central Land Use Plan, so any type of development or zone change, they go to, well, I'm going to have Esther speak on that.
So the North and Central Guam Land Use Plan incorporates elements such as sustainability practices, low-impact development practices. And these practices are recommended to applicants who come before the Application Review Committee, which the Bureau of Statistics and Plans is a member of.
Can I just add, Madam Chair? I want to again congratulate the Coastal Management Division. You have done an excellent job at reviewing, to be, being active in this agency review committees for land use on Guam when they were going to rezone. I very much appreciate, over the years, I've seen that you're one of the few very active, always consistent, and not afraid to say that this is contradictory use compared to your plans that you actually have in place. And so again, I want to commend you. And also on your, what is it? The reviews that you do for federal actions here on Guam, you're also been very, very consistent and very helpful, I think, to the rest of the community by your responses. So I want to thank you, Division, for that.
Thank you.
Senator Perez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning. So I just want to reiterate the sentiments of my colleague that, yeah, I believe that you're one of the guardians of, you know, some of the environmental regulations before us, including the federal consistency, I think was very key to a lot of the resistance to a lot of these development that goes against it, that's counter to it. So I noticed in the bill itself, talks about the UN Development Goals. I know a lot of our framework is talking about national standards. Have, has, have you, as an agency, looked towards the UN framework, or at least the international global framework in regards to having a holistic view on protecting our resources?
You used the word holistic review. So I think there are some things where international avenues or programs are, I'm going to say much, might be much more advanced than the continental US views. So I guess to ensure that we do implement the national standards as well as exploring other UN, you know, issues is actually, is just strengthening our ability to make something more environmentally sound and sustainable. So it's not just looking at what's, what's the national standard for the US, but also looking at what's outside. So.
So, okay. Thank you. Yeah, I do, you know, obviously I support this bill. I co-sponsored it. So I think it's really important to kind of refocus a lot of our environmental protections more in a coordinated fashion. So I think it's only going to support what you guys do as an agency and prioritize it. So I think that's key. So, thank you.
If there are no further questions, we will close. The committee will continue to accept written testimony for the next 10 working days. Testimonies may be sent via email to senators TC Nelson at GuamLegislature.org or delivered to the Office of Vice Speaker, Selena Nelson, of Suite 202 Alpha 173 Espinal Avenue, Hagatna, Guam 96910. It is now 9:59 a.m. I'd like to thank you for coming here and enduring our questions, and thank you for the work that you do. This public hearing is adjourned. God bless.